...of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything on coming up, Brian?
Yes.
Alright, panel meeting's gone tonight, so four of us up here. Vance, you wanna go through the minutes?
I certainly could. The council met on the nineteenth. Dave Fanlon absent, everybody else was here, we recited the pledge. The minutes from March sixth and March twelfth, approved by first motion from John, second by Brian. Consent approved, Brian and Sharon. The regular agenda approved by Sharon, second by John. Auditor, I was absent that evening. Jason Benson was here, presented updates on the diversion. Want me to read the whole thing?
You can go.
Paraphrase it a little bit?
Yep.
Everybody can see it up there? Okay. That was a good discussion, from what I understand, on the diversion. We don't know where we're at on it yet, but it's work in progress. Adam Carpenter was here, talking about Seventy-Sixth Avenue grading and Adelman's... Let's see, when I don't type this, I have some trouble reading it myself. Okay, okay, we talked, I guess you talked about the fifteen-hundred LF to Adelman Edition entrance and Wall at Eighty-Eighth?
Yeah, we were trying to figure out what to do with that first portion of Seventy-Sixth Avenue, or yeah, Seventy-Sixth Avenue, how to stabilize that road.
The fifteen-hundred window fee?
Ah, LF, like I said, when I don't type it, I read somebody else's stuff here. Okay, and then we did talk about the truck route, under Mr. Croker from OT on St. Twitchell. We talked about the Fall Acres Edition, the rezone, the second, we rezoned, rezoned on the second reading. All were in favor. Landscaping, second reading, was approved. The marijuana ordinance, second reading approved, Brian and John. And then we talked about miscellaneous zoning amendments. Second reading by, first, first motion by John, second by Sharon, all were in favor. Then we talked about storm water management, which was approved first reading. First reading was approved, and with an addition to have the fee schedule brought to next meeting, which would be tonight, I guess. First Brian, second Sharon, all in favor. Under Interstate Engineering, Mr. Dolman reviewed the monthly update. We talked about street improvement two thousand seventeen dash five, which is the Eighth Avenue Truck Route, just south of the our cold storage building over here. And let's see, under, okay, engineers report. Jim will prepare, okay, Jim will prepare plans and specs regarding that truck route. Portfolios, Mr. Carson will do report, Dave was absent. Corey did talk about the employment contract with the state administrator, which has been signed and completed. He starts a week from today. Sharon talked about the tree forestry ordinance. John first, Brian second. Brian discussed utility rate discussion, which we have not put into effect as of yet. Corey, North Dakota Department of Transportation, possible demo. Horace was picked out of twelve cities. The diversion was covered during Mr. Benson's discussion. There was an incident south of town that, which sparked a Code Red issuance, which I think we're gonna talk about tonight. And we adjourned at ten-ten. What did we forget?
Well, that's pretty much the gist of what we went over, so.
Motion to approve the agenda's.
Brian does a motion, can I get a second? Sharon does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, hon.
Alright, we'll move on.
Consent agenda, anybody got a chance to look at that? Anything on there, we need to turn ourselves with Vance, it's odd?
It's fairly limited this early in the month. We do have principal and bond payments due of about a little over, almost six hundred thousand. But we'll take a look.
Just hang on a moment.
That would be item number nine. These are due in April as well as November, so there'll be a like amount in the month of November. Nothing, everything else, pretty much business as usual.
Okay. Yep, okay, Sharon makes a motion to approve.
A second.
John, John does a second. Brian, you got one?
One sec. Casco Water users. The twenty-seven dollars there, I'm just curious what that one's for.
That's the water usage at our plant over there.
So it's actually old, 'cause we have a water meter from Casco Water that provides that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that's, Brian, that's an estimate?
Oh, it is.
They indicate on the bill that no one reads it, for some reason, but twenty-seven dollars is fairly cheap, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm not complaining about that.
No, we'll go with that.
Curious, that was something I didn't expect, so. But it's an estimate right now, we, we didn't need to be submitting, or they don't have an automatic reader in there?
That's a good question.
Alright, I'll follow up later.
Yeah.
Set a question.
That bill will occur every month that it has been occurring.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, it's got a first from Sharon, second from John, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving along. On the regular agenda, Russ, you wanted to be taken off of that, or?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll scratch number eight here.
And, Mr. Mayor, I did not get my information in on time, but I do have just a couple of things to talk about tonight. I'll go through it quickly, it involves Black Mountain Software and the tax equalization meeting.
Well, I suppose we can add you in now.
At the next meeting.
Alright, yeah.
Before you approve, if you could add those two?
Okay, you're in.
And I would like to, in my portfolio, just do a quick update on the DOT, let's put a DOT conversation. Just to give an update there. Now we gotta get that in time, so, short conversation, promise.
And who made the motion to approve now, the regular agenda, or was?
We haven't done that yet, just getting all the corrections and additions that you want in here.
So I'm gonna have a portfolio update.
Got that.
Okay. Make a motion to approve a set of modifications.
Okay, Brian does the first, I get a second?
Second.
Okay, John does the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so with that, then we'll move on to you.
Okay, yes, well, you know, the, the board has, we approved about twenty thousand dollars to improve our utility billing program, which Brian and I and Mate have been working on quite diligently, and it's progressing real well. April eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, we have set aside three days for training where Black Mountain is gonna log on with us and go through their entire program. And, like I said, it's going real well, they've got all the balances they need. You will be receiving, in fact, it's in your, it's in your, probably in your post office box today, the last bill that I've traditionally done for many, many years. On May first, we go on the brand new program, it's gonna be similar to a postcard style bill, looks very much like Casco Water, so.
Last, the last, last bill on the old system?
Yes, sir.
Hey, wait, no, hey, Shannon.
Does the new system does the bills for you? What is it, what is the difference, besides the way it looks?
Well, other than, other than that, no, we'll still have to do that input and do the printing and, and do the manning, just like we always have, but it's a much more sophisticated program, which we've been working on for quite some time, and so.
We're getting rid of the dot matrix printer.
What?
Wow.
Call a Smithsonian Institution.
I know, I know.
Alright.
You gotta save that, that has to go into the museum.
That one is going in the museum, you gotta hurry.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm gonna keep it.
You have to, you gotta.
I would, that thing is a workhorse.
I know. Yeah, hey, Black Mountain hasn't worked out yet yet.
Good as I haven't seen one of those in years, I'm gonna come look at it.
So on or about the first week in May, you will have your new bill.
Okay.
New design.
Cool.
If things go as scheduled, and it is progressing very well, so.
Yeah, awesome, great, very good.
The second thing I have is tax equalization on April sixteenth. The county tax assessor, Paul Frakacy, will be here, or someone from his office will be here to go over the annual meeting. And that is gonna be scheduled right away at seven o'clock. So we're gonna just push things back a little bit.
The sixteenth is what you said, that's the next meeting? Gotcha.
So Vance, you're in luck, I'm gonna be able to get that in Horace Happenings, because I was waiting on Park Board.
Okay.
And I held up the whole thing for them, which I got tonight, so, since our deadline's ended today, I'll get that in there.
Okay. And, you know, Paul dictates that.
Oh, I know, no.
Doesn't come from me, so.
But we got it, and we'll get it in there, so. And then we can get it on the website, et cetera.
Yeah. And I'll send out some, some emails, or we'll get some information out.
Yeah, and we should put something up on our Facebook and the website, 'cause everybody kinda knows what's going on.
Already got it, my notes.
Perfect.
Alright, and I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Good, alright, perfect. Let me move on to Jesse and Jesse. Now, you guys will go on. Yeah, we'll just go through the order here, we'll do the monthly report, and then we'll talk about that incident, we'll talk about Code Red.
So for the monthly report for March, calls are up a little bit at seventy-nine, calls for service this month. There's no crashes, two reckless driving, two juvenile complaints, five animal calls, six alcohol-related incidents, two medicals, seventeen citations and twenty-eight warnings, no parking tickets, and three drug-related incidents. Part of those six alcohol-related incidents, there's three DUIs that were a part of that, and the other ones were impaired people. And then we had, that seventy-nine calls for service was six calls related to traffic complaints and seventeen for deputies attempting warrants. There's a one notable call for service that we'll talk about here, just south of Horace. And then besides that, we had, we did locate a vehicle that was traveling around, like, the industrial area between County fourteen and I-29, that area there. It's a little bit outside of city limits, but I think it's relevant to what goes on in Horace here. That vehicle stopped, they were driving around late at night. They were arrested on some unrelated charges, but they had a couple ski masks with them. There's some information that they might have been involved in some past burglaries, things like that. We notified all the local businesses in the area, and they didn't report anything out of the ordinary there. But just another example of, you know, see weird cars, stuff like that, we've talked about it, that we'd like to know about that stuff, 'cause they might not be supposed to be there, so. The frauds and thefts, those were kind of a big issue in January and February. Those were down a little bit this month, there still was a couple, including one that was a theft from a vehicle, vehicle break-in, so just something to be aware of there. And besides that, Lindsay and I both just attended the city council meeting, patrol meeting last month, and then we both had TASER certification training. Any questions on any of that stuff?
Can you expand a little bit on DUIs?
Sure, um, kinda like locations, or, so locations of those, there was one, I had one that was on Wall Avenue and Cheyenne Drive, just west of Main Street there. That one was at eleven o'clock in the morning, that was one of the ones that we had. And there was one, County seventeen and Seventy-Sixth Avenue, just north of town. That was ten o'clock at night, and then we had one that I had in the Horseshoe Bend area there. That one was at ten o'clock at night, that was, that one was called into us, actually. Started out in West Fargo on veterans, and it actually drove over a couple of roundabouts, ended up crashing into the ditch by a Horseshoe Bend there. So that's where I ended up catching that one there, so. Yeah, that was the extent of those. Any other questions on that stuff?
No wild dances over at the industrial area there?
Nope, it's quiet over there now, so.
They got that other system, that one, once.
No issues on that, so.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
I didn't know if you guys had any questions on the incident south of Horace, I can certainly answer those, how we work through those types of situations, how we handle them, that type of thing, if you'd like. I also brought Jim Prochniak here, he's one of our Cass County Emergency Managers. Because in our debrief, we obviously, we learned that we maybe, probably did some things wrong with the Code Red system, where we could have notified more of the residents here in town, and so.
If you could, could you just summarize some of those changes that you have made since that Code Red amendment?
With the Code Red, I would probably let, refer that stuff to, to Jim, other than the fact that what we learned from it as the sheriff's office is concerned, is next time we'd probably do a round grid. What we were looking at that day was we did, was on a Hundredth Avenue South, and we did a Code Red from a Hundredth Avenue South and everything south, because we felt during that situation that we had everything contained to the north, and there was no danger to anyone to the north, based on where we had our resources set and our parameters and stuff like that. But not thinking ahead that people are gonna be leaving for work and driving down Seventeen and coming into that area, so. I think it would have helped with some of that, if we would have done the round grid, or that type of a Code Red system, so. And speaking with, with Jim here, I think he's been, or he has had a manic conversing with Corey today, maybe, and we found out that there might be some things wrong with the way the Code Red system was set up down here through the website. Maybe some people are trying to register for that, and it wasn't working. So we're working to alleviate some of those problems, I don't know if you wanna talk about that at all, Jim? Does anyone have any questions on the incident itself, how we work through those, why we use SWAT in those type of situations, or anything?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, if you wanted to just kinda go through that real quick, as to what went on, if that's so everybody kind of aware of what happened, I mean, I read stuff in the paper, but, I mean.
Sure, so, just so everyone knows, I, I work with our patrol division at the sheriff's office, and then I'm also the assistant commander of veteran valid SWAT, so I can give you a perspective on both of those. Normally, well, reference that call, basically what we were dealing with was an individual who had broken into a residence down south. The call came into us, it said that individual was armed, there were two people inside the residence. So when our guys respond to something like that, their first concern, obviously, is that no one is, or would be taken hostage. So the first thing that they're gonna do when they respond down there is respond to the information that there potentially could be hostages inside the house. So when they got down there, we learned, or both people were able to get out of the residence. So then at that time, we changed our focus to containing the residence, so that person can't go mobile and hurt anyone else. So a perimeter was set up to contain that person in the residence, and then, of course, you know, we put a call into them just to see if they'll come out and surrender to law enforcement. This person didn't do that in, in this situation. They're obviously armed, so we're not gonna send our law enforcement in, rushing in the place to try to arrest the person, because obviously they could get ambushed. So we tried a bunch of different things at that point, then, and usually SWAT is activated, because we've got different resources, access to different types of tools and things like that. Excuse me, I have a cold, so. But anyways, so SWAT was, was activated to go down there, and then we tried to do a few different things, like using negotiators, using robots and stuff like that, to try to make contact with that person, to get them to surrender to law enforcement. And so that's what we worked on for quite some time, so that no one gets hurt. And eventually the person agreed to surrender and come out of the residence, and he was taken into custody. So that's normally what we do in that situation. We do start doing evacuations in those types of instances, but our first course of action is to get down there and make sure that there's no one else inside with the resources that we have, and then, like I said, once we get that contained, then we're gonna start doing the evacuations of properties, asking people to leave, or potentially shelter in place, whatever they feel comfortable with, based on where they're living and where the incident is happening, so. So that's what, that's what happened with that one, I don't know if anyone else has any other questions? Be there from the city council or assistant?
Probably about as well as it could have been, but things considered the way it was talked about.
There was a, it was a tough week, we had, you know, a couple other SWAT calls that week. Things seemed to be really, really crazy that week with, with those types of calls, and fortunately, this one ended and no one got hurt.
Yep, and I appreciate what you guys did there, appreciate all that.
So we're always gonna try to do that, but it just kinda gives everyone a basic idea of what, what we're thinking and how we try to handle those situations, if we can, so. Any citizens have any questions for, for me? Certainly answer those. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Jim, so he can talk about the Code Red system.
Okay, perfect.
Mayor Peterson, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. For the record, I'm used to testifying in front of state legislators, so that kinda is so.
It's a lot more, a lot more casual.
In a previous life, I had to do that, so, my name is Jim Prochniak, it's a long Polish name, and it took me to about fifth grade to learn how to spell it, so. But I serve as the county emergency manager, and I was pleased to see that you have that up and visible for folks to see tonight. I was actually gonna reference this site, this is the Cass County updated website. Went active, oh gosh, I wanna say late summer. When we did that, I think what we became aware of after looking at the City of Horace website is that there are maybe some communities that had a link, but because we updated here, they haven't updated theirs. Not trying to point fingers at anybody, but that could cause some confusion if people were trying to just go through a city site and sign onto Code Red. This is the active one, if you go into emergency management or just our county page, on the very face page and page down, it has some frequently asked questions or a sign up for Code Red. What I was gonna share tonight isn't incident-specific, as the captain had covered, as much as, just to give a, a little idea of Code Red and what your citizens here in Horace can or cannot expect. As you, you've garnered from the incident, it's much like, think of the weather notifications, and when there's maybe like a tornado warning, and they do some kind of a triangulation or a mapping of where a funnel cloud could be. That's how you can pan out Code Red, either in a circle or, you know, a block radius. The point I'm making here is that there is a distinct cutoff. So in other words, if you live on this side of the street, and that line cuts basically down the street, the people on this side of the street will not get the notification, okay? So some people will ask, well, how come my neighbor right next to me got the notification and I didn't? That's why. Unless you put it out so expansive to cover a very large area, that's how you will have cutoffs. Another thing that a lot of people are not aware of, Code Red is voluntary. You have to sign up for it in order to be notified. Now, there comes sometimes when these notifications are gonna happen at three in the morning. And people call our office, 'cause we're the repository for the list, and they go, why is my phone ringing at three in the morning? You're really bothering me. Did you sign up for Code Red? Yes, well, that's part of the notification system. And, and when you sign up, it'll, it'll talk about that, it'll share that with you, but I'm included sometimes in haste. You do those things, and you don't really read some of the information that's included. There's another thing that's very important when it comes to Code Red, because of our community and, and the growth in the outline communities as well, people move back and forth. And maybe at one point, they lived in Harwood or North Fargo, well, I signed up for Code Red, and I'm a Cass County resident. Well, you move, you could get a notification for something that's happening in Harwood, and not get a notification for something that's happening in Horace. So you always have to go in and update that. And then, like anything else, and not to complicate it, there are things you can add on to your Code Red, which are weather alerts, or flood alerts, or things like that. You, you don't have to add those, it can just be basically like police alerts or terrible incidents, and they would notify you. Or, for example, Code Red, quite, quite frankly, can be used, you know what? The end of May, we are flushing all of our city lines, and this is a message from Public Works. We wanna tell you that your water will be, have a discolor to it, but it is safe to drink. And that's a message you'd want all your citizens, it can be utilized that way. We would, our office would be glad to share some examples of maybe some wording, and, and guide anybody through that if they have some questions, it's very easy. We would encourage, as Cass County Emergency Management, that you have an updated link on your website, and we can certainly help out with that as well. And I think I covered pretty much everything that I wanted to, and certainly turn it over to you folks for questions.
So that was, I mean, based on the feedback we got today, we did go update, so if you could look on the, on the Horace website, there is a, a Code Red link there, that we did update that to, to the current website. So if you go into how do I sign up for notifications, you click on the Code Red, it takes you to this, to the Cass County site. And then you click on this link here to go proceed to set up your phone number, email, whatever you want, however, however many notifications you want, because it can be email or text message, I believe. 'Cause I, I didn't receive the message myself, and then I, that pondered, you know, I started asking, am I signed up? I don't know, so that, you know, it became that, well, I guess I should sign up myself, just to make sure.
Sure.
'Cause there really is no mechanism to verify that I am even signed up myself. So that was one thing, if there was a way to look up or have a mechanism to say, hey, should I be receiving these messages? There's no way for me typing in my phone number to say, am I on the list? Right, so there was no way for me to, to check that, so. But went through the signup, and it was actually really easy, it took fifteen minutes to go sign up, so. I would encourage all the residents to, you know, if you take, take a little bit of time on the website, click the link, go sign up for these Code Reds, it's, it's a great tool.
Well, thank you for those comments, Councilman. I, I would also encourage, if I, if I may, that if there's anybody that has any difficulty or question, they can certainly contact our office, Emergency Management, the phone number is up there, once you get into it, four-seven-six-four-zero-six-eight, and we will gladly help anybody enroll, if, if they so choose.
Yep, hopefully we don't have to have an incident like this ever again, but, you know, it kinda, we had it, we kinda understood some of the things that were facing with the Code Red, you know, 'cause that's what we got, was comments that, well, I didn't know about this, or I didn't get a Code Red alert. Well, here's why, now we kinda go through that, and I think now that everybody kinda understands that, hopefully, again, like you said, let's encourage everybody to get signed up on this. And then, like I said, we learned from this incident, we'll have a little wider frame next time, hopefully there won't be one, but if there is, then we'll know how to do that, so.
Exactly.
Perfect, anybody else got any other questions they wanna ask?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Alright, so Russ is a scratch, and so Zach May on his Eagle Scout project. Feel free to adjust the microphone, I wanna make sure we hear you.
Okay, hello, my name is Zach May, I'm part of Boy Scouts, Troop Two-seventy-four, in Horace, North Dakota. Currently, I'm a life scout working my way to Eagle. So I have an idea for Eagle Project, it would benefit the community in a lot of ways. My idea is to create a community orchard, and if you would like to see a copy of the orchard, I'll pass that around. We can share. Okay, so this orchard will be located in Lost River subdivision. It's located west of Cheyenne River, just off of Wall Avenue. Lost River is a new development producing Aurora Smol community field. Having a community orchard to fruit-bearing trees and bushes will supply fresh fruit for the Horace residents. It will also provide an area for youth encouragement, it will encourage self-reliance, food budget, it will reduce food budget, provide therapy, exercise, and add beauty to the city of Horace. This orchard will consist of apple trees, pear trees, plum trees, chokchiris, raspberry bushes, strawberry bushes, and much more. I'm working with Jack Dwyer of Winnie Development to design the orchard. Jack, um, Jack gave support for the orchard, and I've also received a letter from him. Um, this budget for the orchard will cost around fifteen thousand dollars. Some of this money is coming from the grants from North Dakota Development of Agriculture, some will also come from donations. The remaining will come from a request from the City of Horace or fundraising. For my Eagle Project, I will provide leadership and supervision over this project. I will ask fellow troop members for assistance in labor. This project, if we accept, will be done this fall. And any questions?
How long do you guys think it's gonna take to do this?
Um, it should take about a month. Um, it should take about a month.
How many scouts you gonna get to help you on it?
I hopefully should get.
Work and more work, 'cause you're gonna need help. So I'm looking at this. So help me out here. If I go up a little higher, how far away from the road is this?
Um, it's actually in the middle developed.
So it's by the park that you've got there? Okay, okay. That's what I was wondering.
So the sidewalk and the lake are already in place, right? So the scope of your project is for the tree planting and the other planting of the, um, all the shrubbery green.
Shrubbery, shrubbery.
You can see around.
Yeah, Winnie is gonna be doing, um, they're gonna be putting the retention pond, the, um, pond in and they're also gonna be putting the sidewalks in.
So basically your part in this will be the beautification.
Yep.
Part, okay.
Putting all the trees and stuff in.
What about once they're planted and maintained then?
Um, I'm gonna pass, so it should be passed, um, the city of Horace will maintain the trees after planted and they should be pretty low maintenance, so.
But there is mulch around the, the plants that are there now?
Yes.
Or that would be.
Oh, yeah.
What about irrigation?
Um, irrigation, so there's gonna be for the trees, um, so there's gonna be an in-ground irrigation system to water the trees. That will also be put in by Winnie.
Was, that was to be implemented before or?
Yep.
Oh, okay. So that isn't part of your scope?
No.
It's just, okay.
There.
Okay.
I see you've got Canadian red rhubarb. What about the green stuff? I just mean, I'm a rhubarb guy. I'm a rhubarb guy, okay?
Designing everything.
Yeah.
And then I think on that sheet it says blueberry, um, but we're taking the blueberries out, so that's not gonna be in there.
Oh, the, the North Sky Blueberry?
Yep, there will not be blueberries.
So you're just gonna stay with the Fort Laramie strawberry for those areas? Now the fruit, how many of these are actually edible fruit?
Um, well, if you have all the trees, they should be all edible.
Yeah, they all are.
Yeah, they should be all edible.
Okay. So you mean for community use, so to speak?
Yep.
Except for the deer?
Yeah.
And the birds and everybody else, you know, get in on the action.
This is all at, at Lost River?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so go back again, fifteen thousand dollars for the project.
Oh, yeah. What I'll need for the city is I'm gonna get a letter of support, um, so I can present it to the board, the Eagle Scout Board for approval. And then, um, after I get approval, I'll come back and talk, talk to you guys again, but the budget's gonna be around fifteen thousand. Um, some will come from the North Dakota Agriculture and some will also come from donations, but the remaining of the money will be a request from the city. So.
So the other two numbers you don't have?
Yeah, I'm not for sure.
Okay. So that'll be part of your final, final assessment, once you establish how much donations you'll be able to raise, to raise. Okay. Do you have a goal in mind of how much you plan to target to raise?
I should be able to raise, oh. I'm not for certain. I couldn't give an estimate, but.
I mean, even a percentage? Are you shooting for like thirty or forty percent?
I mean, yeah, that seems about right, but we're not for certain yet, so.
So have you talked to the scouting office yet or showed them like the preliminary?
Uh, no, at least I've talked to you guys about it and then if you approve it, I go to their, uh, go to them and they approve it.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yeah, I don't think you'll have any problem with that.
Yeah.
So you need a letter from, from the city?
Yes. Yep, I'm gonna need a letter, um, of approval from the city, so I can present it for the Eagle Board.
Well, it's a letter of support, right, is what we need first, so that we can, 'cause it isn't necessarily that we're approving it. We're just saying that we're supporting the project and we're willing to participate in some way, right?
Well, I think it's have the, have the orchard be on what will ultimately be city land, once that project.
'Cause that was, that was one question I was thinking about is, is, is this, uh, do we have to present this to the park board for their approval as well? Doesn't this become park board, parkland after?
No, it's, it's their retention pond in Lost River. So essentially the park is here and then it's over there.
It's beautifying up the retention pond.
Making the retention pond.
No, I, I love the idea, but I think the complicated issue is, you know, I don't think Zach's gonna manage it every year. It's how, I think this is a cool opportunity for some community maintaining of this down line for other projects for kids as well.
I think that becomes the forestry committee's responsibility, because once you have trees that are on city property, then the forestry committee.
I would agree.
Is responsible for.
Yep.
I would agree with that.
That, that was kinda my point, is who, who takes over the, the ownership responsibility for this? That's a good answer.
I mean, as we decide who is on the forestry committee and who that committee consists of, that is really the go-to.
Right.
For any, anything on city land, any trees, so.
Now, do we have to talk to his bunch too to make sure that they're all happy with this?
Zach, do you have a letter from?
Uh, I do have a letter from Winnie.
He has a letter.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, yeah, free time. Cool.
Okay, so we're proving, all we're doing is we're, we're saying we're going to provide a letter of support for the project. We're not necessarily endorsing or saying we're gonna allocate the funds. We're just saying we're supporting the project to proceed.
I'm motion to do that.
Okay.
I'll second, I'll second that.
All right. John makes a motion to, we'll write the letter of support, okay?
I'll second.
Brian does a second. It's all in favor of that side?
Aye.
All right.
Nice job.
Okay, Zach, good luck with that. Okay, Lucas, you are up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. First question, who's drafting that letter? I'm assuming Vance?
Sure. Get you a template, the answer, we can.
Glad we got that checked off on this.
Vance was a great writer, fifty seconds.
Thanks, Corey.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, uh, the first item I have is a conditional use permit, uh, for animals in suburban residential district. Uh, as part of that zone, um, keeping animals on property is a conditional use permit. With that being said, it has to go through the process of going in front of the Planning Commission for a public hearing. Then in front of the City Council for a public hearing. The Planning Commission had a meeting, a public hearing last Tuesday to discuss this conditional use permit. Um, there were those that were in opposition of it and there were those that were, um, okay with the conditional use permit. Uh, the Planning Commission did not make a recommendation to the City Council. They could not agree on, um, any conditions or whether or not to approve. Or deny or recommend approval or denial. So then it comes to you with no recommendation. And so tonight is a public hearing in front of the City Council to discuss whether or not animals will be allowed, um, on that property.
So was, there was a staff report that went along with this, so.
Yep, and it's up on the screen right now and it, it hasn't been, um, modified, I do not believe, since the Planning Commission, um, meeting. And I guess there wouldn't really be much to add from the Planning Commission standpoint, but what would have been added is the public comment. Um, and there are people here tonight that were at that meeting as well and I'm sure they will be willing to speak.
Just to be clear, this is the portion right here, my mouse is moving over, that's Greyhawk, or this is all part of the Greyhawk development?
So it, where that star is, is the entire property?
Twenty acres right here, right?
Twenty-two acres.
But this, these are all the Greyhawk homes, correct? So the access to this land is from sixty-four avenue, correct?
Private drive, yeah.
Private drive on sixty-four, okay.
So you should open the public hearing.
Yep. Okay, so with that, we'll open up a public hearing on that. Um, Michael, if you wanna get up and just kinda talk about what you're thinking about doing? Um, so we can kinda get everybody up here educated. Not everybody was sitting in on that meeting that you had last Tuesday with the planning and zoning folks.
I've got a little bit here if you can stand it. After Horace annexed me and these people as well, they never saw my farmstead. They didn't understand its origin or its historical usage. They did it without my knowledge, without any discussion or input from me, without my consent. They rezoned me and stripped my, what at that time are known to be no strings attached grandfathered in animal rights. They rezoned me suburban residential. I'm neither of those two things. I happen to be out there and it's kinda suburban by geographical area, but it's definitely not a residential thing. It's a fortified farm. Um, as a result, the aforementioned injustice I applied for the conditional use permit, numerous adjacent property owners came to resist. Had they gotten the same notice I got when my rights were stripped, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I mean, I didn't get any notice. Nothing, so it's, I think it's written in the paper or something, you know, they put in a thousand things, I don't read that. They should've got the same notice. They wouldn't have made it here, so. This is the last place I wanna be. I was led to believe for some reason that there wasn't gonna be any conversation about this, either be thumbs up or thumbs down. That's what I was led to believe. Uh, consequently, I was not prepared to have that discussion or even this one. I mean, if I was gonna get into this, it'd be a really big deal. I'm still not quite prepared. I couldn't get all the supporting information I wanted. Who all got those letters? Who all said what, et cetera, et cetera. How come only these people from one area showed up? They're the only ones. You see, I think somebody got together and worked them. Um, but I'll take kind of a shot at it.
Michael, just let me ask you, how long have you been out there?
Thirty-one years. Long before this ever was even dreamed.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So you've been out there for a long time?
Long time, yep.
When you were asking.
Same as everybody else. I think it was oh-seven, oh-eight, oh-six, what was it? Whenever, whenever Torres Horse took over that Fargo thing, you know?
Yep.
So do you know when the zoning changed?
After that, unbeknownst to me, but then, they didn't look at it. They didn't do squat, you know?
Did I explain how the zoning works?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you that, so I didn't know what happened during that timeframe, so go ahead.
What happened during that timeframe is, uh, the same thing that happened to me happened to Perry. Uh, when we were in next, we came, we actually were at land and, uh, when the whole section was the next, it came in that, uh, the, the zoning commission would have looked at the land and said, okay, the closest thing we have for this is going to be suburban residential. That's how I went from ag land to suburban residential. That's all it did. And as far as notice goes, on an area wide, uh, zone change like that. It was published in back then, it would've been West Fargo Pioneer. That was the only place it would've been published.
Right, so nobody got letters? It just got published as a public notice?
For example, in two thousand and seven, when the new zoning ordinance came into place, there were a lot of, uh, a whole lot of things that were changed. Because the new zoning ordinance had new terms. Nobody got an individual notice on that and it was a published in the, uh, West Fargo Pioneer. That would've been the only place anything would've been published.
Sure. So unless you're reading the public notices, you wouldn't have seen that as, all right. Okay.
So you've always been a farmer on that land?
No. I've been, my family's been engaged in farming, I say, all the way back to Noah. But, uh, we have a hu- huge farm in, uh, Georgetown, Minnesota. My dad was a agricultural kingpin over there, so we didn't get along, so.
So when did, when did you have animals on your property?
I had them, uh, one, two, at least four different times since I showed up there, but I probably should read my whole story, but. I probably can't, but anyway.
So the last.
My, my intentions were to always have animals there, but I had ten kids and I was working a UPS job and I was, I could never do anything with it, so, I mean, it was just, couldn't do it. None of my kids wanted to do it. So finally now I can do something. They say you can't. I mean, in my mind, I was always doing it. I mean, it was just, just who I am and what I am, so.
Well, you, you don't have animals on your property right now?
Not at this moment, not domestic animals, but like I said last week, there's hundreds of animals there that just exist, you know, 'cause it's, it's wild. It's a wild area, you know, so.
When was the last time you had domesticated animals?
Few years ago.
Two years ago, four years ago?
Two, twenty-twelve, I think I had something.
Twelve, so about six years ago. And what did you have at that time?
A horse somebody gave me.
And what are you wanting to get now?
Well, it's kinda funny that there's, there's a chance I may never do anything with this. Pretty much didn't do anything for all those years, but I wanna have that right. My thought is, at least, uh, maybe a beef animal or two. I'm a horse freak, so I'd like to have two or three horses back if I could. Uh, maybe some chickens. I don't know if I'd raise any other kind of meat or not, it'd be a possibility, but maybe sheep or a goat or, uh, along those lines, I think, so. Maybe, when I say horses, could be a donkey or a mule, you know, same kinda thing, you know, so.
So let me ask you, on that land you got back there, it's like twenty-two acres, if I understand.
Approximately, yeah.
So what of that would be considered or classified as pasture that you would have on that?
Well.
Like fifteen acres?
I don't know, probably up to seven acres I probably could get out of that bare land, you know, if I was to jury manor it around, if, if I needed it, but.
Well, so I was just wondering how much, how much access you had to pasture land?
People don't always, people don't always pasture, you know. I was thinking that it could be such a thing as, I might've had a, a fifty cow confined. Animal business there, you know, that I could've had that before this came up, you know? I mean, that, those exist. I mean, just small little area, it might be a building, uh, eighty by two hundred or something. They got fifty cows in there, you know, they never get out, you know, so. I don't have that, but I could've, you know?
Yeah, so again, you're not looking to put up a feedlot or anything like that?
Nothing like that, so.
Just have a couple ahead of cattle around, okay?
They, they had a lot of things, they said last week. I have a few notions on those, but.
Yeah, I think, I got, we kinda got the debrief, or I got the, the minutes from the meeting that you had on Tuesday, so I have that. You guys have any other?
Can you send that out to us, Corey?
I can do that.
I guess maybe that's, is there any other public input? Do we wanna ask for any other, if anybody else is here to speak?
You got some other stuff you wanna just say at this point? Go ahead.
I could address some of the things that they talked about last week. Some people worried about the property value. I say that where they are was just a farm field out in the middle of Red River Valley segment broke off the farm that I'm on now. And I would own it. And my little brother hadn't bankrupted the thousands of acres that we had at Georgetown. I'd have bought the whole thing, you know, so. And also, what, when Burgum got south of there, I'd own all that, you know, so. We wouldn't be talking about this for another twenty years, probably. I call mine a priceless gem. It's twenty heavily wooded acres and secluded acres on well over a thousand feet of the no flood Cheyenne River minutes from the city. It's not likely to ever negatively impact the value of their land, so. It's not likely, unlikely increase it. Somebody talked about trees. I believe they've been here for hundreds of years and are likely to be here for hundreds more. They tend to replicate themselves. I planted hundreds, maybe thousands of trees myself in my time. I'm not afraid to plant more if I worry about that, but. Someone mentioned that now I wanna have animals. Well, I've always wanted to have them. No one that's here, they moved out there and they never came into my yard to see who I was or what I was up to or what. No one that's here, they moved out there and they never came into my yard to see who I was or what I was up to or what I was into, so. They didn't discuss that, I pulled it, see, and anybody who said, well, we'll get a place up on, go across the Fargo or something, that was my intention, I think, so. Somebody talked about flies, I don't think animals create flies, but perhaps attract some. That being the case, all things considered, a few animals like you're discussing would likely tend to draw them away from your premises, not cause war. Someone envisioned a noise of mooing, of mooing cows. There are already cattle in our neck of the woods, we hear them rarely, they don't generally speak up. I believe that person was alluding to peace being disturbed, which leads to my next second here. Somebody mentioned having their peace disturbed, no wonder I mean nor. Who likes peace more than me? Adventured to save, you're thoughtful and honest, you'd have to agree that as I and my family, this has had the greatest loss of peace since Greyhawk manifested. And nobody there but me, see, that's why I wanted it. I was here first and long for any of you, there's nothing but barrier between me and Montana. And that's one of the reasons I came, I could list other examples of this peace thing. Someone mentioned escaping stock, good fences and good management generally diminish the likelihood of that occurring. Someone mentioned barrier as an option. I submit that a barrier already exists, there's hundreds of feet between me and Greyhawk to the west and to the north where these animals would be, you see. There's the thick woods there, you know, you can hardly walk in it, you know. And a ways south of there, where it's adjacent to them, it's just fields, you know, I have some fields there, so there's been animals in there. And I say that I've never seen them from my yard and theirs, and they've never seen me from their yard and mine, and they said they've never seen me.
So you got too many trees?
Yeah, they can't see me, so I don't exist. And then it says, I am a farmer, North Dakota's an ag state, Cass County's an ag county, Stanley Township's still primarily an ag township. And that ceases to be, what better reason to have a segment of the past?
So you said, are you a farmer or do you work for UPS?
Well, I did, but I'm.
You retired from UPS?
I got another line about that, it says, I'm not retired, I'm very retired, my, my wife's got dementia, I don't want primary care, you know, so. Anyway, as I was saying, what better reason to save a segment of that past, you see. Property may yet go on National Historical Registry, likely qualifies that, I've talked to people at Bismarck a lot in the past, so. Think about probably if you live next to that. Maybe someday it'd be a horse park. Better than shelter, better than all. Are there other options? I'm almost done. I had this thought here, I'm always thinking, you know, like, I haven't had enough time yet, but around the rim of my property, I'm able to ask anybody if I can do it, it says, how many feet do I have to move the line? East from the west and south from the north, say, here this is, now you can't even talk about this anymore, so it'll be a hundred and fifty feet if we go home and see. I still have ten or twelve figures and everything, so I do my thing, we start over, so. So that's what I got.
So let me ask, have you got a fence up right now or are you gonna put one up, is that what you mean? I wasn't sure if you already had one established or you're gonna be working on that?
There's no significant fence there, but there would be if I had any animals of that sort, so.
What kind of fence were you proposing?
Whatever it takes, so, depends on what the stock is.
Yeah, sometimes I was just wondering if you're gonna put cattle in there, you probably want something electric barbed wire or something.
It'd be something serious, you know. We had, we used to have thousands of, well, not thousands, a thousand head of thousand pound cattle on this farm in Georgetown, you know, in an area smaller than mine, so we know about cattle, so.
Alright, so like I said, it's a public hearing, anybody from the neighbors that want to get up and say something, give you a couple minutes to go ahead and, have you got some comments or anything on that? Anyone? Go ahead and grab the microphone if you want. Okay, I'll ask one more time, anybody's got any comments, go ahead.
I understand, Mike Scott, my name's Clayton, I live just to the west of Mike. Okay, um, no, I said, I appreciate what Mike's trying to do, but times are changing, areas are changing, they rezoned it to residential suburban. Horace is only getting more dense with more residential neighborhoods, they're coming in with dense houses just to the northeast of us or northwest of us. And we talk about this, there's cattle and horses down the, just to the west of us, which there are, but I can see within ten, fifteen years, they may be pushed out as well. I envision roads connecting on that new development, there's water, sewer, all this stuff, it's coming. It's a residential area, and like, you know, this, you know, the city's going to, and, and grow around it, and is it just gonna keep, you know, as a conditional use permit and who's gonna monitor it? If you want a couple cattle, a couple horses, a couple goats, a couple sheep, a couple pigs, poultry, you know. He talks about the, the acreage that he has to the, to the south. Once the permit's given, that could all of a sudden turn into pasture land, maybe he wants to do something different, I just, there's no monitoring of it, and, and we're concerned, like I said, it's a tranquil place back there, that's why we moved out there. There was one horse, and at the time, that was the last horse, because the city of Horace had annexed it in. So the stuff that's out there already to the west of us at the horse stables, which is fine, there's, maybe, I've seen ten horses out there. We never have a problem with them, they're well confined, we never hear them, there's no smell. My concern is, you have, you know, a barn and you're gonna find animals, what are you doing with waste? That smell in the spring, it starts thawing out. We're, we're just concerned as, as, you know, if we wanted to move out to the farm, we would have moved out to the farm. So that was, there was no farm animals out there at the time when we purchased our home out there.
But you were aware there was a farm there?
There was a farm there, but it was also zoned suburban residential. Pardon me? In two thousand twelve? No, I, I understand that when the development was moved out there, you, you were, you know, zoned agriculture, but when we moved out there in two thousand twelve, we thought, okay, this is great, you know. That's, that's my concern, it's just, the city's changing, the town's changing, it's growing, there's gonna be new high schools, new developments, water, sewer coming in, connections into different subdivisions, and there, you know, you're gonna have a farm in the middle of it all, you know.
But you understand what he's asking for, it's a conditional use permit, this isn't, this is something that he's asking for can be rescinded if something doesn't go right, or if it gets to be an issue.
But, but Mike, who monitors it?
The code administrator and then the city attorney would monitor, something like that, if there is an issue, then it would go to the code administrator and then it would go to the city attorney. So that's.
So they stop out there and check the fences and make sure you got.
Well, if there's any issues that arise and then it's, is he violating the conditional use permit and then?
And like I said, the, the letter that was, and where I guess I was taken by surprise was the letter that was sent to us. It said a couple horses and domestic animals, it didn't prelude to cows and chickens and, and pigs and, you know, a couple horses, we would, I would have no problem with that. But my concern is, once you open this door to, to conditional use permit, where is the limit, is it ten?
Usually we set the limit.
Do you, did you, but, okay, so what is that limit?
Yeah, so that's, that's what I'm saying.
Right here, so that, that's the recommendation from planning a zoning, correct?
Mm-hmm, that's from the, from the planner.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so what you guys are seeing in front of you.
This would be the recommended limits.
Yep. That's what I sent you guys, was the recommended limits based upon what the city planner was talking about.
Two horses, two cows, four sheep, four hogs, or combination there, and twelve sound, that's what it says.
So the other part of this is too, that the animals would be confined to a location identified that shows that the barn's no closer to two hundred feet from the south property line, three hundred and fifty feet from the east line, four hundred feet from the north line, and five hundred and fifty from the west. So that's where the fencing would take place. And again, have to adhere to all the local nuisance and noise ordinances.
So how do those boundaries work on that property then?
Such as?
Without seeing a plot?
It's on the screen, I know.
I'll turn it on.
So the, the barn structure is not there today?
It is.
It is there today?
It is there.
Okay.
Like I said, I was just, my concern was, Mike, like I said, if you, if you're keeping, you know, what I envisioned from the letter, that there's gonna be a fence along that west tree line, and there's gonna be cattle grazing back there and mooing. That's what I, that's what I envisioned.
Right, that's what he's talking about, where the fence is gonna be, it's, it's in the conditional use permit, if we grant that, that's where he's talking about as far, where the fence would have to be away from the property line, so.
Is in the fence is five hundred and fifty feet away from that west line?
So just around the barn?
That's what the conditional use.
Basically confined to the barn is what I see.
That's the barn.
Yeah, that's what I see confined to the barn area.
But it doesn't say anything about the fence itself.
No.
Cattle are still free to go all the way up to the property.
Where the measurements I saw, it kind of took it right to the barn and that was it. There really wasn't any other area for anything, looking at, if you go back to that drawing.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, go back.
Okay, so then we could.
So what were you, what was your plan with the fencing?
Yeah.
With the fencing to go around the per- perimeter of the property?
I mean, not the entire property, unless we were considering this scenario where I moved in under fifty yards, probably get a fence there, I can have the hundred fifty all around, but hopefully they take little fences, neighborhood that are, that's where that would be confined.
So you, you would keep the animals in this general vicinity?
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to be able to go outside, I mean, you certainly wouldn't want them stuck inside all the time, that's, that's not healthy for anybody.
So what would be a reasonable buffer?
Well, I think I would describe it there.
Okay.
If it's five hundred feet to the west, I still have four hundred feet to the east, so.
So then, like, the other thing I was gonna ask you too, is like, over the winter then, like in the spring, when it comes to cleaning out the barn and things like that? You know, that'll be something too, that even though, you said you're not having that many cattle, so it'll still be the confinement over the winter, I'm having to move that disposal or whatever you wish.
Makes good manure for the farm, for the farm fields and gardens.
For gardens, yeah.
So.
So I take it you guys are neighbors?
Oh, if anyone else wants to.
Yeah, I'm to the north. So I live on the north side, northwest side of this property, he's been a great neighbor, other than maintenance of his road occasionally, but it's just a minute issue. Like Mike, I'm fifth generation farmer, ended up in the valley here for engineering, but I still run a ten thousand acre farm on Burley County with cattle. I'm opposed to the first, uh, the conditional use, not because of the horses or chickens, simply the cows and that soil. To amend it, I'll fully support it, I'll help him take care of it, but I don't want cows by my place. We run cows on ours, and we got flies in our shops in the yards of eighth of a mile from the, where we keep the cows.
How many head are you running?
When, in the summertime, most of them go out to the pasture.
Yeah.
There's five or six of them kept around because orphan calves and stuff like that, and you can hear them bellowing at night. If I wanted to live on a farm, I'd live on a farm, get the means to do it, but I chose to live here. That's my comment.
Okay, so you got something?
How many, can I ask you, how often do you, cow gets out? On the highway, the road, surrounding?
Well, last fall, I lost forty acres of a hundred sixty acre bean, bean field, trying to round up the cows, four wheeler tracks and they bust through.
I am Keith Axman, sixty-one, twenty-four, seventy-fourth street south, I live just to the west side of Mike's land. Just first off, I want to say thanks to Mike for all your comments, I know it's really hard and it means a lot to you about this. It means a lot to, to me and my family as well, we've been there for fourteen years, and when we moved out there, you know, we were told it was residential and, you know, if we knew that it wasn't going to be, and if there's, you know, the chance of, you know, farmland being around us, you know, we probably would have, you know, given it a second thought. You know, we haven't had, I haven't seen any animals on your property for fourteen years I've been there. We, we love it just because of the, you know, the peace and tranquility of our lot, and, yeah, it was me that made the comment about, you know, a cow bellowing in the backyard, if, you know, if you're having a campfire back there and you have people over and all of a sudden, there's a cow. But, you know, we didn't want, you know, the, we like the, the peace of the outside without the disturbance of, you know, pigs or cows or chickens or whatever, just being able to hear that, I mean, I the, the deer that, you know, come and go through the property are great, you know, we love that part of it. The only reason that, you know, I think most of his neighbors are here and myself is that I, my metaphor that I like to give for it is smoking. Anyone is free to smoke or do drugs or whatever you want to your body, but if I'm standing beside you and you're having a cigarette and I'm smoking the secondhand smoke, then it becomes my issue and I'm affected by it. So, and that's, like I say, the only reason we're here. The conditional use permit, that's, you know, it's great, I just, there's no way to monitor it like, like Clay was saying. And he's right, the landscape has changed. There's gonna be, there's a new subdivision coming into the west of us, that's gonna come all the way down to that, that, the horse stable that's out there. It's just a matter of time before the property south of us is gonna sell, and that's probably gonna be single-family housing as well. The, I will say, you know, right on the boundary of us, there is a fence post there and there's a whole pile of barbed wire fence, you know, and that's right, right on our adjacent property. So my, my concern with that is, you know, if we do have to do a, you know, a barbed wire fence or electric fence, you know, I have a, I have a five-year-old. Sorry. A seven-year-old, no, eleven-year-old, I wouldn't want anything to happen to them. So. That's all I, so thank you.
Anybody else?
I just got a quick comment.
Go ahead to the microphone, please.
My name is John Stute, I live west of Mike, too, and I've been out there about twelve years now. And basically, all I got to say is, is that when we moved out there, the land was zoned residential, and that's what we looked at. And now, on the east side of Mike's place, it's residential, on the west side, it's all residential, north and south, it's all residential. Now we want to put, raise, you know, cattle and, and chickens and hogs and so forth, inside of a portion of land that's surrounded by residential neighborhoods, and you can just heard what concern the neighbors are about the animals and the upkeep that goes along with it, and animals get out, as Patrick was referring to. And animals will get out, and they do a lot of damage to the garden, because we had horses and they got out in my yard, but Elaine was, well, she was kind of busted up and so the neighbors, we always helped her out with her horse belly and so forth, but times have changed, and we're, we're kind of moving on, and now to put animals. And now to put animals in this portion of land, it takes a lot of money and upkeep and time. Mike's wife is sick, and, and I understand what Mike's after, you know, to be able to have a place that have these kind of animals like that. But time isn't now, I don't believe. And that's basically what I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wanna?
My name is Bill Lovell. I live at seventy-one twenty-seven. My family just moved out here. It'll be three years this April, just built the house out in that gray house. Love the area, wanna be part of the community. I just don't feel having a hobby farm in the middle of a growing community is a very good idea. And that's just me. But I know this farm, I mean, there should be possible insects, the flies and such. I just don't think it's a good idea, and I just, I oppose it. And that's, that's all I have to say.
I'm Karen Stute, and I just wanted to add that we've been out there for, not twelve, but almost fifteen years now. And I, I've never seen any animals on Mike's land, and we live right to the west of it. But there's, there's a lot of maintenance that goes on with that, and, you know, I know Mike's got his hands full with that much land there, and every spring I wonder, gosh, if they needed an ambulance or a fire truck out there, how are they even gonna get something down that road? Because just the maintenance on that road, I don't think he can get vehicles in there sometimes in the spring. And I don't know how you maintain property like that with animals on it. And my concern is, we've got people with respiratory problems, and we've got small children, and elderly people come over, and, and those years that there was one horse across the street, the flies were so bad, you couldn't hardly stand to be outside. So flies don't necessarily come because there's cattle, but they come because where there's one fly, there's another. It's like rabbits, you know? And if you don't clean up after stuff, they just multiply. And I have no doubt that there won't be any cleanup going on. And I think that's my biggest concern. That plus, I think if the city's gonna start giving out permits for stuff like this, they have to have some procedures in place to, to follow up on these things. Are, are you gonna require fences, and what kind of fences? I think if you're gonna have hogs running around, you gotta have something better than a barbed wire fence. They're gonna get underneath that. You need a solid fence for things, different kind of animals. You can't just have a, one, one system isn't gonna work for everything. So you need to have something in place, and you need to have follow-up, you need to have consequences for not fitting in with what the, what your standards are.
Okay, anybody else wanna? Say anything?
So, I'm Mr. Axman, I'm Keith's wife, and I guess for me, my big concern is that I have three small kids. And I grew up on a farm, and ran with cattle, and I knew how to handle them. But if, if, if something got out, my kids wouldn't know what to do. It's not like they're around those kinda animals at the time. And so that part worries me. The other part is, is the smell. You know, I, I don't, I don't want my kids to then have to be confined into the home all the time because he has to clean out the barn, because we know that that's gonna have to happen. It does, you've gotta take care of the animals. There is gonna be some smell that comes with it. I know the horse down the way, we experienced some of that, there were times where there were some smells. But he's very close to us, and so that is gonna be a part of it. So I think it would be different if we, if we knew that they would be confined and stay confined. That'd be one piece. And then if we knew that we could have animals there that weren't gonna create a big smell, that would be the other part, too.
So what if we, you know, if we're looking at this, again, we had the, the city planner was the one who kinda came up with this list. This is two horses, two cattle, sheep, hogs, boughs, whatever. Could be come up with some type of compromise, or he has like a couple of horses. Okay? You know? Again, this is something, it's a, it's a conditional use permit, and it can be rescinded if things go badly. But he's got, I mean, Lucas, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, he can certainly do this. I mean, there's nothing, there's no legal ramifications, because it's a zone.
No, like I said, and that's why the, with a conditional use permit, there's conditions that are placed on it. If the conditions are not met, then the city council has the authority to revoke it. Done deal, no animals, can't have it, 'cause you violated the conditional use permit. And so there is enforcement, so with, with the concerns of whether there's enforcement, there is enforcement with this process, as the process lay down.
So what I'm trying to figure out here is, can we come up with some compromise here? Not everybody's gonna get everything they want, but can we have some compromise on this? So, if there's any more comments on it, otherwise.
Yeah, well, do we close the?
Okay, I'll close the public meeting, then, we'll do that part of it. Michael, would, I mean, are you okay with if we narrowed this down a little bit? So you have something, you may not get everything, but you'd have something? Okay?
Well, I guess, you know, that's my first comment, is he didn't even have a plan on what he wanted for, you know, for animals specifically. And we're kinda writing something here, putting ideas out there.
Well, what the, what the recommendation is here?
Right, that's our recommendation, which we haven't had anything on. And of course, hearing from the neighbors around and knowing animals, I think it's virtually impossible to keep them contained, even with the best fencing. If everybody's comparable, or comes to a reasonable solution to a.
But I think one of the other things on here, too, on the, on the conditional use permit, is that we should get approval of the fence. You know, if they're gonna put up a fence, it should get approval, so it's a proper fence for the proper animals. You know, different fence, obviously, for sheep, different fence for pigs, compared to.
But I, I don't know that we have the authority to dictate what kind of fence.
No, but I mean, it's gotta contain the animal.
Well, obviously, I mean, if you have a dog, you have to put up, you have to have some way to contain the dog on your property, too. I mean, it's no different, an animal's an animal, right?
But.
I guess.
And the city has an ordinance in place that says you cannot let animals run and follow, so then it would be, if they get out, they're in violation of the city's ordinances for that. And to answer your point, the applicant did actually say, the list that was developed by the city planner came from an email from the applicant, and that's why you have, that was a lot of animals. It's not, the city planner didn't make it up, it's from an email.
It's from an email, yeah.
From the applicant.
Interesting.
One.
And that's in your, that's in the packet.
I'd like to ask a question of the planning and zoning committee. You guys couldn't come up with a agreement on a recommendation, whether to approve or disapprove? What was, what were some of the points from the planning and zoning perspective? Why, for, or against? Russ, can you shed some light on that?
Hey, I could, I could not get a motion for approval. And then someone said, I'd like to make a different motion, so, make a different motion. So we had a motion for denial. And didn't get a second for that, so I seconded it, so we could vote on it. Because I wanted to know where, where people were standing on it. And we couldn't get a motion for approval, and we couldn't pass, pass a motion for denial.
There was no unanimous?
No, there, it was.
There was, it was, it was basically a hung.
Yeah, I think it's.
Well, part of the, part of the issue is, when you have all the neighbors who don't wanna, who don't want it, you wanna listen to them. But on the other hand, when you've got land that is, that you can do some, he, he could've had, he could've had six horses on there, and the neighbors would've never would've seen them. Take a, Google the, the area, these trees.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Okay, it's trees, you, you, you could have anything back there, and you wouldn't know it.
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate that twenty acres got rezoned from ag to suburban residential when it did. It probably was more fitting as ag land, and should've stayed that way, but.
I will not agree to that point.
I mean, but we can't change the past, except to, at this point now, he's not asking for a rezone. He's merely asking for a conditional use permit to allow him to do what he should have been able to do all along on his twenty acres.
What his original email went, came on animal units, is I had to dig into, way back when, we used to define animal units and numbers. You know, I had to dig into history, and I sent, I sent Mike a copy of that, because he was in contact with the city planner. So I gave him some numbers, and, if you decide that you wanna restrict it, you, what you could do is add restrictions, for instance. You know, take out the hogs. And specify how far the fence has to be from, from, from the neighboring lots.
Right.
For instance, if you have the fence a minimum of two hundred feet from the neighboring lots, in the old ordinance, that there, there was a two hundred foot restriction. So that's where some of that two hundred feet is coming from. We don't currently have that in our current, in our current, current ordinance. It just, basically because we've gone away from animal units. We have animal units in the middle of town.
Well, and twenty acres is more than sufficient to have a couple animals. I mean, more, more than sufficient. Goodness, we have properties that have three acres and have two horses on them. So twenty acres, I mean, he's got plenty of acreage. That's not an issue at all.
I think we're talking about different types of animals, too, though. To me, there's a, a big difference between some cows, some hogs, some horses, whatever, and what kind of fence you're gonna put in there that's gonna keep them in there. I just, I just don't see it. And unfortunately, we have gone to residential development around it. And however we got from point A to point B, it's irrelevant almost, but that's the hard facts of where we're at. The increased transportation, the increased population around there just doesn't, to me, fit in what we should have.
But I don't think we can tell him he can't have, I mean, the way I see it, he's got twenty acres. We should not be dictating what, that you can't have horses on your twenty acres of property.
It's not zoned for, right, it's not zoned for, right now? Is the problem? That's the unfortunate part about it, and, and like Russ said, I, I sat in the planning and zoning, and with the neighboring people around there coming in, the majority is not in favor of it. If they wanna, maybe the way we should do it is cable this off, and let them have a conversation and meet together if there is a compromise they can come up with.
I'm gonna look at it this way. Russ is, is always telling us, you can't control land you don't own. And I think this is similarly the same situation. I, I hear what the neighbors are saying, but they don't own those twenty acres, so they can't tell him, you can't do this. I mean.
But what's interesting, though, I'll still go back, and I'll, Mike, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I kinda have to, because that's where you came up and said. You didn't know what you wanna have, you don't know if you will. I'm going by what you said up here, and it's hard for me to make a decision on something, I don't even know what you're wanting to totally do. I don't know fence, I don't know anything. It's kinda, we still, even if we are gonna come up with something, which I don't see how we can tonight, because there's too many variables. We've got a bunch of neighbors that aren't in favor of it. I don't even see a plan from a homeowner, from a landowner, on what he exactly wants to do.
And, and my, my issue is that this property is essentially surrounded by residential.
Right.
So here again, we set a precedent for the future, that if another landowner comes in and wants to put some cattle on another piece of land, that we would, how would we not grant them a conditional use permit, should they wanna put animals on this? So if it were farmland, or just, you know, grains, or something like that, it'd be a different thing. But because it's animals, it's, they become more permanent, because there are structures and so forth that are required for the animals on this property, and there's implications. You know, that, I mean, for all we know, the twenty foal could be peacocks, and peacocks are really, really noisy. And all of a sudden, we're gonna be dealing with noise organs. You know, not saying that that's what you're gonna do, Mike, I'm just saying that that, that doesn't, you know, prevent him from putting those, those animals on.
Then it also rescinds the conditional use permit, and that's all.
I don't have to go down there.
We're putting, we're putting ourselves in a maintenance scenario on this.
Yeah.
And, and we're, we're accepting responsibility for monitoring this, and, and so I.
Here's a lagoon that smells like heaven out there.
And, and we're trying, we don't, we don't need more smell. So we're, we're trying to make that area a residential area, rather than making it an agricultural area. So I.
You're only increasing population out there, and traffic.
This land is going to have greater value as residential in the near term, rather than.
You can't tell him what he can do with this.
Can't disagree with that. But.
I mean, he could.
It, it is suburban residential. That's how it's zoned. Now, that, that, it's, that's water under the bridge. There's nothing we can do about that, other than rezone it back to agriculture, which we're probably not gonna do.
I thi, I think Mike mentioned also historical park, or what was that you used? About your land historical, you talked to Bismarck or something, what was that?
Mike, would there be a possibility that you would be open to considering to not have cattle, but have horses and, or sheep? I mean, chickens are okay, they don't go too far, they don't ever go too far, they kinda stay within a small area usually where they are. But, I mean, that seemed to be agreeable with your neighbors, is that something you'd consider?
Well, I think John's right, I don't know, we're necess, without some more details on this, we're not gonna be able to agree on this plan without a more definite plan for what exactly you plan to use it for. So I, I tend to agree that we should, unless there's a more specific definition of what you plan to use, I, I would say we wait for more input. Fencing, fencing distance from property, how you plan to use, you know, what do you plan to do with the barn structure itself, et cetera, so.
Couldn't that be something we could include in the conditional?
It's not there, that's what I'm saying, it's not there now. So that's what I'm saying, the conditional use permit application is gonna have to be modified anyway, if we're, if it needs to be changed.
No, we would make the conditions, the same as we've done in other cases where people have applied for conditional use. We set the condition and say, the fencing must be sufficient to contain the animals, it has to be two hundred feet from the west, or whatever the, that condition is, we define it. So we're not asking him to define it, we're going to, we can say that.
You're asking me to define it, I'm gonna say no to it.
We've defined it in other cases, so why would we not?
I'm, I, I would agree with Brian, I, I don't wanna set precedents on this for future areas.
You know, John, I, I don't see why not. Animals make good neighbors.
You, we just never know what it'll turn into, and I, I get we have the conditional use to rescind it and everything else.
He could be sitting there parking some sort of big piece of equipment there that runs at six AM and continues running until ten PM every day, and that's not what he's suggesting at all.
No, but you'd probably get a noise complaint on that. You'd get a noise complaint or something, and.
Animals make good neighbors, they're quiet, they're nice to look at, you can see them, I mean.
Can't see them with the trees. Can't see them with the trees, and I, I mean, who's going to see them? I mean, what are you, you're reaching.
So then, no one's going to see them, so what's, why would there be a?
This is here again as a precedent. I would argue that this is a precedent that we are setting for land that is zoned for residential, residential, suburban residential, and we're allowing it to go back to agriculture use.
Okay, so hold on a second.
Using a conditional use.
Okay, so what do you say, so you want to table this and have a further discussion? Or do you want, what are you talking?
If you're asking for us to take action tonight, I would be against it.
Correct, okay.
Okay? If you want to try to come up with a scenario, but again, we're like talking Mike into what he wants to do. Why, why is that? You know, I'd like to see Mike come up with a game plan, lay it out to us, and propose something. See what the people say. Planning zoning, Russ gave a great idea. Have a barbecue, invite the neighbors over, have some discussion on it, and see if you guys have, can come to terms on something, you know. But with the way the room is, I'm going to side with the people who are the majority, you know, who aren't in favor of it. But if there's a way that you guys can come up to terms, you might get me on board for that.
We've done more than 20 acres. Did you even have animals? I'm in favor of having animals. Don't we, don't we have a bill? But you're, you're open to having animals, that's your choice. Just saying.
Brian, what do you think?
If we have to vote, I would say we're going to deny this. I would vote to deny this conditional use permit at this point, unless a modification comes back. Because I, I think this land has greater value to the city as suburban residential than agriculture.
City doesn't own the land, we don't have a right to tell them what to do.
It's zoned, zoned as suburban residential. And I, I go back to the zoning. Right or wrong, it's, it is what it is. And we set a precedent if we allow the conditional use permit, so I'm.
The smell and the flies are, you know, potentially, how do we ever determine, you know? That's unpredictable.
That's subjective, I know.
It very much is, the cleanup, what's your idea of, you know, cleanup versus yours versus mine? It does sound like he's got his hands full, I mean, I, I just.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to table then, because I'm in favor of it. And I don't think this motion should, I don't think this should be denied. I think he has everybody to have the conditional use permit, and we can set restrictions on that. We can be very clear what it is we're, we're open to, to accepting, and what we're not. But I don't see any reason that on 20 acres, he can't have a few horses. That makes, we have horses on far less, far less, properties with far less acreage.
Is your motion a table?
Today table, indefinitely or table till next time?
So, yeah, I mean, do you think you'll be able to have a more defined plan for us by our next meeting? Until the next meeting.
I'd want to have time for the neighbors to be able to. I, I think they're going to be asking for it too.
Would two weeks be enough time to come up with some ideas? So when you guys came back in here again, that we might have some consensus on this, one way or the other?
I think that you should also request pictures of his barn and his property.
See the property.
See the property.
Well, first, and see the property, we're going to put these animals in that building he's got up there, and the fences. Yes, see first, and, and see it here, big difference. Because I haven't seen a horse out there for 14 years.
I mean, that's the other thing I take in mind, there, there hasn't been one for 14 years.
But that doesn't mean he can't have one today, John, he's still got 20 acres.
But it's not zoned for that.
It's zoned.
And if he, if it was that important, he would have come up with this.
And if he had horses in 12, that was only five years ago.
Okay, so let's do this, let's do this. Mike, why don't you kind of come up with a more definite plan on this one, and?
Let's wait a month.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's bring it back in a month.
Do that in a month, and let's come up, we'll come up with a more specific plan on what you're thinking about doing here with this thing. You've got kind of what you've got here for this conditional use. See if you can come up with something that's a little bit more concrete for everybody, and let's see if we can come up with something on this, all right? So let's wait 30 days or whatever it is, so we have the next meeting, and then let's have another conversation. Okay? All right. So that's what we'll do.
Is there a second on that?
Motion to table, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian, does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to the next thing.
Mr. Mayor, the next item I have is a rezone in Visto's property. It's rezoning the property from Ag to Light Industrial. There should be another report provided by the city planner for this. The planning commission had a public hearing last Tuesday, and they recommended approval from Ag to Light Industrial. And the applicant is here tonight to speak, you know about public hearing, you'll hear from him first.
Look up a public hearing on Visto's rezone from Ag to Light Industrial. Go ahead, Kelly, you're up.
Okay, I guess that's probably the best map I have. Do you guys have maps? Do they supply? Okay, well, we have the Visto's first industrial south of town. It was a 20-acre parcel that we divided up into six other parcels, and they have been recently sold, built on, and being developed with new businesses. So we have a deal worked out with the current landowner, purchase agreement, everything to move forward, hinging on zoning and plating approval through the city of Horace. We would be purchasing 150 acres, which 90 go east to Drain 27.
Right here? Yep.
That's backward, that's, can.
So this, this is.
That's 90 there, yes.
This is, this is 100th Avenue right here.
Yes.
This is 100th Avenue right here, and this is.
That is one tract of land right there.
This is Drain 27.
Yes. So we have purchased the 150, looking to rezone Light Industrial and parcel, working with interstate engineering, and parceling lots into the two-acre, two, three-acre range. If people want to go larger to six or 10-acre lot, something of that sort, they would have to buy multiple parcels, come in, planning and zoning, get approval through here first, and depending on what type of business it would be, we would be asking higher prices along 100th, trying to keep that more commercial, um, commercial businesses there, instead of putting maybe a business that won't look as good on 100th. So you guys would be helping decide that, we would decide with buyers too, what we would even sell them to put up there, but obviously comes to planning and zoning, and what would go along that road anyway. The roads would continue in the same fashion, interstate is working on that project as far as keeping the same, right now they're currently gravel. There's one road that runs along 100th on the north side, that would continue all the way down, and then tie in to the point of about, this is 100th here. But tie in, there's a grove of trees or approach right on that line. So you'd enter there, take the road, the loop all the way up to town here. So that's what we're looking at doing. The first phase is, it'll be in that 54-acre range, it'll run to this line. This, this would be the first phase there, second phase, third phase. That'd be phase three, phase two, and phase one would be there right now, we're just really looking at doing. Uh, phase one. This year, hiring, having the roads built. This time, instead of us doing them ourselves, is the plan with the, with the property. Phase three could someday go residential, we're not really sure. If that gets changed, now we'd like to just get it changed all at once, so we won't have to come back if we do go Light Industrial back there. Kind of doing it all in one shot, I guess if it would go residential, we would apply for.
Backing up to the lagoons might be an interesting question.
Exactly, but the land to the east of that, coming into town here, is projected on your Metro Cog residential. So maybe the streets would just go through, how long are the lagoons going to be there? And when would this land get developed anyway? So that's, we're, we're looking at just changing the zoning on the entire 150.
So what's your thoughts for along Drain 27? Because that would impact usage of that lot.
Well, there is, there's a right-of-way easement there, it's from the bank, not the center of the canal. You see that darker gray area? The, the black area is Drain 27. The, the darker gray area is a, it is called drainageway easement water course setback zone. So it needs to stay, it could be a gravel parking lot? Can I? No? Oh, I didn't hear, I couldn't see who was in it.
It remains undeveloped.
Undeveloped, uh, so if it did go residential someday, you could have houses up to that 150, have to stay green. Um, I maybe misunderstood interstate when we were talking what it could be, but we have, in the purchase, some of that was deducted out on purchase, because it's not valuable. Until this would all get developed, the 100 acres, we have agreement with the landowner, he's going to continue farming it, until that day it would get developed, so. So from, I guess, the, the east side of the drain is pretty much all, if you have setbacks there, it's just not usable. Uh, the west side, we'd have to stay the 150 feet from the bank, not the center of the drain, but it could come to the west more than.
Have you had any interest yet in anybody wanting to do any commercial development in that area? Or is it just kind of speculation?
Not along the drain, but in the first 50, we have prospective buyers. A heating and cooling company wants to start a business there. He was talking about 30 to 40 employees. Not putting up a huge facility, just probably something similar to the buildings we have there. We have another company, a concrete company, interested anyway, but, yeah.
Lucas, what is our ordinance on structure appearance for?
The, the new one says that anything in commercial and industrial has to go in front of the planning commission for their approval. Target for aesthetics.
Yes.
Yep. That's, it changed that Main Street Design Review Board into a design review of industrial and commercial facilities.
Can they get final say?
Planning commission?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, the buildings we put up, we had to come through, site plans, all the different plans to put up the buildings we did, and, you know, everybody who would buy would have to before. And a lot of that, the purchase wouldn't even, um, let's say we wouldn't close on the land, with most buyers there. You wouldn't close on land until you got your zoning or your site plan, everything approved to put up what you want to do.
Well, it's also the aesthetics of what the building looks like.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
They're going to have to get that approved before.
Yeah. So in selling land or buying land, you really won't close on anything until you can get your approval on, so, yeah.
Right, you should have all that.
Yes. So it's up to you guys really, and the planning and zoning, what's going to happen along 100th. Any of this land here.
You wrote up front, you said it's gravel?
Right now it is.
Short term, long term is?
Um, we've spoke with, um, I had with Cory one time about, you know, if it's gravel now, if the landowners right now are all on board, if, if it would get paved specials, all that stuff, we'd be fine with it. Right now, the city does the plowing of snow, all that stuff on it currently, so.
We, we see if we could do like a bigger project, you know, maybe get one, when we're doing a road deal.
Right, that's one thing.
Then tie it together, yep.
It, it's, uh, it's one of the, you know, main corners closest to horse right now that.
Right.
It needs to look good. Uh, I think the aesthetics is very important, and paving roads, streetlights. Kerb and gutter probably aren't far away, but we need to sell more lots, and, you know. Most people, if they're going to put a business there, are not going to want gravel anyway, so, after.
So we try and see when we're going to do a bigger project with the roads in town.